All right, we'll call to order the meeting of the mayor and council on this September 9, 2025. We appreciate all of you coming. We've got a packed house tonight. We will start the meeting with invocation by Pastor Brinchell Willis with the New Life Deliverance Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the blessing of life, health, and strength. We thank you for the city of LaGrange and community you have allowed us to serve and call home. Lord, I pray for every leader gathered here tonight, the mayor, council members, and all city officials. Grant this wisdom to come from above, wisdom that is pure and peaceable, guide their conversations and decisions so that they will be fair, just, and beneficial for all the citizens of this city. We ask for your protection over the people of LaGrange, over our families, our school, our business, our neighborhoods. May this city continue to prosper, and may the decisions made here tonight help it flourish even more. And the Lord, may everything be done in this place bring honor to you and the good people of this city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
Amen. Thank you Pastor Willis. And the councils had the minutes for the regular council meeting held on August 26.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed the same? Pass unanimously. We have one public hearing tonight to rezone parcels located at 25 Robertson Street and 118 Raglin Street from Campus General Business to TNMX, and to amend the comprehensive planned character area amount designation from parks to commercial development.
Mr. Mayor, tonight's public hearing has been properly advertised. We'll take any comments at this time.
Okay. I would like for the developer, if you would, come up and kind of give us a little overview of the project, and then I'm going to allow anyone against the project to come up and speak after you kind of give your spiel on what you're doing.
Well, thank you for having me. It's much appreciated, and thank everyone for joining up for this as well. The planned development for this, well first off, I'm Stephen Vought with the Paces Foundation. I'm the chief development officer. We're a nonprofit that has been in existence since 1992. And we provide affordable housing solutions all across the southeast. We're domiciled up in Atlanta and focused.
One second. Can you, just so everybody could hear you, yep?
Yep. But we focus the majority of our development efforts in the state of Georgia over that long period of time. So we got drawn to LaGrange because you guys have had such a success over the past many years from an economic development perspective, and wanted to be sure that you, that the city of LaGrange has a wonderful, healthy workforce to go along with the job growth that you guys have done such a good job creating. This development in particular will be financed by loan income housing tax credits, which is credits that are given down by the federal government to the state and then competitively applied for. That will raise a lot of equity into this transaction so that we can charge lower rents. The tenant population for our development will earn incomes anywhere from 30% of the area median income all the way up to 80%. So it's considered workforce housing. The type of tenants that we're really targeting in this community are police officers, teachers, sanitary workers, social workers. A lot of, a lot of the folks that, I think a lot of the members in this, in this room right now probably go to church with on Sundays. So it's, we're trying to support the fabric of that community, make sure that we're partnering with the community to get input in order to make sure that what we design is acceptable for the community. I did have a chance to go over to the Active Senior Center and had a great conversation with Mr. Wooton. He's a very nice guy. I think that we can probably partner on some things going forward when we develop senior communities in addition to family communities. So that is something that I would love to explore as well. But to summarize the development, 101 units, it supports those AMIs that I mentioned. We would apply for these tax credits at the end of, or in October of this year and would learn about the, at December, January of 2026 if we get awarded, and then we would be pushing forward from there. But the whole concept here is to create affordable housing for the workforce where they can live in the community in which they serve, in which they work. And that's, that's really, that's really the goal that we're trying to accomplish with our development.
All right. Thank you. Do y'all have, council have any questions for him?
I do, because I wasn't, I wasn't, I was on a training class this morning, so was not able to be at work session. When you said the 30% to 80% AMI, do you happen to know for a two-person household, what the 30%, what the 80% is? What that income range is?
I can tell you that the project itself ranges from 17,000 to the mid 70,000.
Okay. Of income. Does your company typically do background checks?
On everybody.
On people that afford?
Absolutely. One of the things that we talked about at the working session this morning was the security features that I think is a concern for the community and to make sure that the property is as safe and doesn't have any negative consequences to the surrounding land uses. Certainly something that we will do. Gated community, security cameras, lots of lighting, work with the local police force to make sure that they have access to our systems to help, if there is any crime, to really, you know, try to crack down on that. As I mentioned this morning, it takes one or two bad apples to make a community go south. We've been doing this for a long time, and I personally have zero tolerance for that because it ruins the entire community for everybody when it starts to slide downhill. So we, we background check everybody. It's something we have to do based off of the program that we're operating under from the state. And so everybody gets a background check. If there's any criminal records there, they usually get flagged and cannot live there.
Okay. I just had one more question. So are these, so I know that you said that you have to apply and that the awards would become available, would be known in January of '26. Is it typical that you would be awarded? Is it a competition for the La Tech funds? What's the likelihood, in your opinion, that you will get the funding?
It's very competitive. It's hard to put a probability on it because we don't know exactly who will apply for different deals in the city. I know that Dash is working on a deal. They're wonderful folks. I would love to see all of us get funded to help supply the workforce housing that's needed in this community. But it's very difficult to put a percentage guess on it because we just don't know who will ultimately apply in this area.
Okay, but you only do the income-based housing. So if in the event you were not awarded, then this is not a project you would proceed with?
That's right. That's right. And I believe, for what it's worth, I believe that there's a provision that got attached to this rezoning that, that said if it, if an affordable housing deal was not to go forward on this, then the zoning would revert back to what it currently is?
Yeah, what was the recommendation? Remind me what the recommendation was from Planning Commission?
Excellent question. This did go to the Planning Commission, I believe, on August the 11th of this year. They did unanimously recommend the approval of this proposed rezoning from Campus General Business to traditional neighborhood mixed use. The members of the Planning Commission did recommend a condition associated with the rezoning, just as Stephen had mentioned, that it basically revert back to Campus General Business in the event that an affordable housing development does not occur in the property. But while speaking with our city attorney, it is impossible to allow for that type of condition to be attached.
Just to put it simply, you know what you have to do to rezone property?
Yes.
You have to have public hearings and two readings, and at least in my opinion, you can't just make it automatically revert and then skip all of those steps. You'll be rezoning property without going through the zoning procedure step.
So when we, so I'm sorry, let me ask another quick question. So when we do attach conditions to a property, so if the condition is attached, then it would become then that it was zoned and would only work for a, if we, if we conditioned it that it had to be income-based with tax credits? Is that possible and that it wouldn't revert, but that that condition would remain?
I would like to take a look at it.
Like it does with other conditions?
Well, there, it's very narrow what you can condition.
Okay.
I'd have to look at that closely, but I'd.
I think that's going to be important for us to know between.
And I'll look at it, but I'd, I'd be surprised if I would come to the conclusion that that's a good condition.
Okay.
But I'll certainly check.
But also too, if you don't get the 4% tax credit, you're not going to proceed with the development anyway, correct?
Yeah, without the tax credits, we wouldn't be able to push forward with it.
Got you. So it won't matter anyway. He's not going to proceed. But, so I don't have a question for you. I got a statement for you. I want to say, man, thank you so much for, I don't know who Mr. Wooton is, but I want to thank you for going over to that Act of Life community and engaging them and talking with them. And so that means a lot to me. Thank you so much, man.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I do have a question. It may be for Mr. Costle or staff, but just because we were shown some photographs of what you're proposing today, it seemed like. So do you have anything? Do we have anything that you could put up on the screen so that at least the citizens that are here are interested in this, getting to see what's proposed?
I didn't bring anything, but I would be certainly willing to, you know, share that information via email with anybody that so chooses to receive it.
Okay.
Just to the council.
Okay. So now, any more questions from council?
Not at this point.
Okay.
I don't have any questions. I do have a comment about the rezoning of property. I just want to remind the council that I personally don't take lightly telling people what to do with their property. I hold the Constitution very near and dear to my heart. And I don't want the citizens of this community to get the wrong impression that we're strong-arming people into what they can, can do with their property. Zoning is one thing, but I respect our city attorney Jeff Todd for doing the due diligence of protecting the citizens' constitutional rights and each person being sovereign in their own abode and having their own say-so what to do with their property. I think that's very important. This is a democracy, not a communist society. Thank you.
All right, we'll, we'll move on now. Anyone in council chambers that would like to speak out against this, please come up and state your name.
Good afternoon. I'm Dan Wooton, Director of the Active Life Recreation Center for Older Adults. And we've got a big group here tonight because we believe that the proposed zoning change to allow apartments to be built beside the Active Life Recreation Center would unintentionally disrupt or harm both the center and the community that it serves. The Active Life, which welcomes hundreds of older adults each week, has long been a safe haven, offering recreation, health programs, and fellowship in an environment that is peaceful and secure. Introducing a high-density housing development directly next door would increase traffic and safety concerns for our participants, many of whom face mobility challenges. The center was thoughtfully designed to encourage healthy, active aging, and its mission cannot be carried out effectively if the surrounding environment creates unnecessary risk. For the past 27 years that I've served the older adults of LaGrange and Troup County, I've witnessed firsthand the city of LaGrange generous and consistent support of the Active Life Center as a hub for wellness, social connecting, and independence for seniors. I deeply respect your zoning commission and development group, as well as the city council's commitment to placing developments where they strengthen, not weaken, the long-term fabric of our neighborhoods. While affordable houses, and this is important that you understand this, while affordable housing is wonderful, and we deeply support that, especially I'm an advocate for affordable senior housing, we, we believe locating this directly beside the senior recreation center is not the right fit. This proposed development would alter and negatively impact the landscape of the existing area. Such a development risks introducing instability, higher crime potential, increased traffic, and constant turnover that directly conflicts with the secure and welcoming environment that the Active Life Center provides. Once rezoned, the character of this area would be permanently changed, and the seniors who depend on the center would be the ones most impacted. For these reasons, I respectfully urge the city of LaGrange to reject this zoning change and preserve the integrity of one of our most important community resources.
Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak? Mr. Atkins?
I'm Randy Atkins. I'm a member of the Senior Life Center. And I want to just give you three quick reasons that I think would make this an easy decision if I was sitting in your shoes. Number one, you just spent millions of dollars building the pickleball court right across from us. That pickleball court adds traffic to Raglin Street. We have tournaments in there that adds traffic to Raglin Street. And now you're talking about building a complex next to it that I would think is going to have somewhere around 100 to 300 cars if you have 100 units. Would you agree with that? Coming in and out of there on a daily basis. How much stress can that Raglin Street intersection right there take? If you've been over there, at times, it's already an issue. So I ask you to think about that. Number two, I'm sure we're all in favor of low-income housing. Nobody wants to see anybody living on the street. However, there's only one place in LaGrange that seniors gather, and that's at the Active Life Center. I am sure there's multiple locations in LaGrange to build another low-income housing unit. So I want you to think about that. This is the one and only place that you see these people behind me come to for recreation, for food, for encouragement, for education, for exercise. And you're going to take that away from a lot of people if you make this decision. And then lastly, and thirdly, I want you to think about that area over there in particular. Not only are you going to impact the Active Life Center, but you've got a lot of kids that come over there to play. You've got a lot of kids that come over there to participate in sports, both at Shuford and Harris Field. You're putting them awful close to some things that you may not want to put them next to and maintain our reputation. So I want you to think about those three things. Traffic, only place to build, our only place that we go to is seniors, and what you're going to do to those other complexes that you spent millions of dollars. I know you made the right decision. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Naya, and this is my mother, Mrs. Burton. We are residents in the area that will be directly affected by this development if it passes. We are here today to speak against this development in our neighborhood. We are concerned about the impacts that this may have on our community, such as safety, traffic, and property values. In recent years, there have been several shootings and car break-ins in the neighborhood. We are concerned that with the possible increase in population, that there will also be an increase of crime in our community. We also want to express our concern about the traffic that this will bring. We are in close proximity to the baseball complex and the newly acquired pickleball field. During peak ball season, the traffic gets even more congested. We currently deal with drivers constantly speeding through our neighborhood and not obeying basic traffic laws, not to mention the noise that we experience from the ball fields. We feel that a new development will only aggravate these current situations.
Hi, my name is Wonderland, and I live on Raglin Street. As a homeowner, I am concerned that this would negatively impact our real estate value and property taxes, and with the increase of traffic noise and the change of the neighborhood dynamics. We understand the need for affordable housing. We ask that you put yourself in our shoes as a homeowner in this area. We do not feel as though this is the right choice for our neighborhood. We are asking for the city council, the council to vote no against this development. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council members. I apologize if I'm behind. I just heard about this today on the pickleball court. And several of the members asked me to come and speak and ask some questions, so hopefully I'll do them justice.
Introduce yourself.
My name's Kathleen Richardson, and I'm a member of the senior citizen group that they're talking about, and also I play a lot of pickleball. These questions may have already been answered, but I don't know. And I was wondering if an impact study, charrettes have taken place regarding this project?
I'll allow the developer to answer that.
There's been no impact study to that.
I would imagine that that would be done before they take a vote to rezone.
Just acknowledge.
Hi.
I think your question, ma'am, was, is there a traffic impact study that was conducted as part of the?
An impact study, charrettes that would affect roads, schools, you know, a general impact study, not just roads. Utilities?
We've got somebody in the room that's much more well-honed in utilities than I am, but I'll certainly do my best to answer a few of your questions. The Georgia Department of Community Affairs does not require a traffic impact study for a development project of this nature. Quite frankly, they only require a traffic impact study if there are 400 or more dwelling units being proposed. This particular project is only 101. As for enrollment in the Troup County school system, on, if not a monthly, at least a quarterly basis.
Speak up more. I see some people trying to hear.
...job, planning for future growth and development throughout the system. Currently, they have approximately 12,000 students within the entire school district. And I seriously doubt, even though I can't quantify that, that this would add a significant number of students in that geographic area. I believe that this particular area may be serviced by Clearview Elementary School, and it is seemingly serviced by LaGrange High School and Gardner Newman Middle School.
Thank you. And as I mentioned, I wasn't just talking about an impact study, maybe charrette meetings for community involvement and whatnot. Also, another concern many members have is this is just one development. I've lived here for eight years, and I wonder how many permits have been issued, how many approval of apartment projects, be them affordable or not affordable, in the last five years. Does anyone know how many units have come into LaGrange in the last five years?
I went here. I went here with hell.
Let's do this. Continue with your, what you want to say and with your questions, and we'll let Mr. Costle address them at the end.
Thank you. And the reason I ask that question is, one site may not impact, but if you're not doing charrettes and you're not doing studies for the compounded number of sites you're having, you may find your infrastructure extremely stressed when these projects come online. And as I said, I've only lived here for eight years, and I've seen an unbelievable difference in crime, in traffic, in trash on the streets, in behaviors in citizens. When I first moved here, people were unbelievably friendly. You could say hi to anyone. I don't know if you go about town, perhaps maybe not showing that you're a council member, but you'll notice a difference in behavior. And these are things you have to take into consideration for elderly people. Now, as far as AMI tax credits for affordable housing, what's the incentive? That's it. I had a question as far as what was the incentive to bring them here. Again, wouldn't it make sense to get the 4% approval before you rezone? It seems like the cart's before the horse here. And last, and also, another question I had, when you do the background checks, what keeps someone, what would be the background check that said you could not become a member, you could not buy in? Is it felonies? What's your standard there? And do you have to have proof of employment? Things like that. Again, to do the approval to the city attorney, you could actually have an amendment placed on this, saying that they would have to have approval in order for you to rezone. Tap some sort of amendment to your approval, so that they're not stuck with a situation where it will just come back from another developer at another time. And I thank you for your time for listening. Thank you.
Mr. Costle, do you want to address any of those questions that we didn't get answered?
I'd be glad to, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
One of the key, one of the key questions there was specifically, how many apartment units have been built or developed within the city of LaGrange? Quite frankly, over the past 36 months, that number is slightly less than 1,700. I believe the actual number is approximately 1,652. But it bears in mind that all of those are market rate dwelling units, which is in contrast to what is being proposed here today, with these being affordable housing units, hence the pursuit of a 4% tax credit through the Department of Community Affairs. Additionally, of the PCA projects that we currently have underway, within the entire city of LaGrange, we've only got one. And that is the Unity Mill Lofts that was pursued by Dash. If they haven't been awarded the tax credits yet, I believe that that is forthcoming. And once again, that is for approximately 100 units in the vicinity of 815 Lehman Street. I can't speak for reported criminal activity and how it coincides with rental properties, but I will say and remind those in attendance and the council members that the city of LaGrange, our housing inventory is approximately 59% rental. So, you know, and at this point, the developer is proposing to add an additional 100 units. As I also alluded to this morning during the work session, we talked about housing affordability being a national crisis, not something specific to the city of LaGrange. And according to the article, it's the worst that it's been over the past 40 years. So I think that is, that bears mentioning as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in council chambers that would like to speak against? Yes, ma'am. Please. Hold on just a second. We're going to let this gentleman go. He was coming out, and then I'll let you.
You can come on and sit out in front. Make it easier.
Hello, I'm Roger Sledge. I'm a member of the Active Life Center. I've been in the building since, well, 2016, 2013. I've seen a lot of people come and go there. And we have activities in the evenings that if apartment complex is built right there, it may discourage some of the activities we have. We have dance classes at the evenings. We also have two monthly dances that we have, Saturday night dance, and the ballroom dance. Facility is built next to the center. I'm afraid that it may be too tempting for crime to be, for our attendants to be assaulted, you know. We don't know what kind We don't know what kind of people would be in those apartments. We don't know what, how they feel about seniors. And as you know, that there's a lot of senior abuse in this country, in our communities and everything. And I would hate to see any of our members be assaulted or whatever. And I'm afraid if this comes about, it may happen. And God knows what's on the hearts of these members behind me. We all are God-fearing people. We all law-provoking people. And I feel like that this may not be a good idea. All right, thank you.
I just have a suggestion.
Introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Teresa Jones. Since this is going to be affordable housing, why not consider it for seniors? Because it's by the center and the traffic will be less. And we need more affordable housing for our seniors. That is, should be a priority in the city right now. So, I would suggest that.
It's a good suggestion.
I think you've got a couple of questions to answer.
Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to come speak? If not, I will ask the developer if he would come back up and if any concerns that you might can address, like for you to address them or questions that need to be answered.
I will echo the last comment about additional senior housing in LaGrange, and I think it's a wonderful suggestion. And the zoning request in front of you today would allow us to do either a family deal or a senior deal. So, that's not what's proposed at this point. But that is definitely something after, after speaking and understanding, you know, the needs of the community, we would be willing to do that as well. So we're wide open to that, would love to partner with the senior, the active senior development there, and would really, really enjoy that partnership, be it in a different parcel or on this parcel. We're really trying to have a net impact, a net good impact on the city. That's, that's my, that's my desire. It's not, you know, it is not to bring a nuisance development near anybody. I'd like to maybe just reinforce that this is a workforce housing development where, where police officers would potentially be living, firemen, nurses, teachers. It's oftentimes, there's a reaction to think that there will be heightened levels of crime. From my understanding, as some of the other affordable housing developments around the city, there has been relatively low levels of crime. And we would want to make sure, make a commitment to the city that we would do everything in our power to do that as well. There was one question that I did want to respond to about the rezoning ahead of the tax credit application. We just can't do that. We can't apply for tax credits without having the proper zoning in place. So that's why the sequence of events is unfolding the way it is.
Background checks?
And background checks, that's a great question. Yeah, it's a full criminal background check, and if there's any, anything that shows up, any felonies that show up, then it's an automatic disqualifier for the residents. And income verification was another topic that was brought up. We, we have only a few different ways that the state accepts income verification for our tenants. And it's, it's a pretty grueling process to go through the application process and prove your income and so, and we have to meet regular annual compliance standards from the state, as well as the Department of Community Affairs. So there's, there's a lot of oversight in this. Again, you know, my commitment is, is to have developments that work and are value-add to the community. To the extent that any development that I'm ever involved in ever becomes anything but that, I would not be a part of it. So I, I grew up not too far from here, went to the University of Georgia, and I, I want the best for, for LaGrange. It's, you know, the negative topics that are coming up are all normal concerns of uncertainty and things like that, and I appreciate them very much. So I do want to acknowledge that. I also wanted to be heard that we'll do everything in our kind to make sure that it's a positive impact on the community.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak for this project? Seeing none, oh, we got, we got one.
I wasn't planning on speaking, but as a local real estate agent, I see the need for this type of development. My name's Deana Simmons. And I'm a local real estate agent here in LaGrange. I understand everyone's concerns and I feel like they're valid concerns, but I don't feel like that's what this development is going to be. I feel like there are going to be police officers there, so you might be extra safe. Firefighters, teachers. We don't have workforce housing here. We, there's a need also for seniors, like we talked about. Tucker Cottage has a two-year waiting list, which is on the end of Ragland. And that development is beautiful, it's nice, they maintain it, all this kind of stuff. There's no problems down there. And this is just the other end. I understand it's beside the senior center and, and all of that, but I would think you would have more crime coming in from the ball fields, drawing more people, because that's people from out of town coming to play pickleball and to play baseball and all of that kind of stuff than this local development's going to bring. So, just as a Realtor, I see the need for it.
Thank you. Anyone else in council chambers like to speak for this project? I'll take a comment from council.
Okay. Councilman Nathan Gaskin, I support developments for working-class people. I support my seniors, and I support housing for them. But one thing that concerns me about the rhetoric that I hear is that there is fear being stoked in this community. Okay? You are looking at a very strong leader, and I take your safety to the utmost importance. I don't want people in my city living in fear. I don't want you at the senior citizen, at the senior center in fear. We are doing our very best to make it safe, hospitable, and amenable to all people, whether you're working, retired, blue collar, or taint top. I need all the people in this city to realize that the city of LaGrange is growing and you are blessed. You are that farmer in Luke 12. You are blessed with riches that people want to partake of. Now, we got a choice. We could build a shed and store all our riches and eat, drink, and be merry amongst ourselves. Or we could learn to do what the gospel tells us to do, which is to welcome all and share. I implore you that if there is a safety concern, bring it to your council, we will address it. I have been down Raglin Street, I have walked the street, I pick up trash on Raglin Street. I am there for you. And one thing I'm not going to have is a community in fear. And if anyone's stoking fear in this community, please let me know and I'll put it to rest. Thank you.
If there's no one else in council chambers that would like to speak for this, I'm going to call this public hearing closed. And we will move on. If anyone needs to leave, you're welcome to get up and dismiss. We'll, we'll take a short recess to allow you to get up and leave. It'll be in two weeks. The second reading will be in our, our, September 23rd.
Is that your attitude?
We always appreciate.
That's always, always.
I would tell her, "Get out."
Would you do that? I'd tell her, "Get out."
All right, we'll go ahead, we're gonna go ahead and get started back if I can get everybody kind of quiet down as you leave. Leave quietly, please. Next, under petitions and communications, we have the Northside Community Revitalization Plan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members, as we discussed this morning during the work session, representatives with Dash are requesting public feedback and council support for a community revitalization plan and corresponding DCA tax credit application as part of their proposed Northside Community Revitalization Plan. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening is to call for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, October the 14th.
Okay.
It's the next meeting, actually, isn't it? Oh, it is the next, I'm sorry, September the 23rd.
Yeah, I'm sorry. September 23rd? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to call for public hearing.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes unanimously, call for public hearing. We have a UDO text amendment, gravel parking lots.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members, as we also discussed this morning during the work session, members of our planning commission have unanimously recommended an amendment to our Unified Development Ordinance, whereas gravel parking lots would potentially be permitted via a special use permit within certain zoning districts. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening is to call for a public hearing to be held on October the 14th.
Motion to call for public hearing.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, City Manager report.
Yes, sir, a couple items. As discussed this morning, we have a failed storm pipe under Lake Shore Drive and the, the secondary pipe is offshore and is state of disrepair. And we're asking for the council to declare an emergency...
Motion to call for an emergency to repair the pipes.
Under the Public Works Law, and, there you go. And also, just to put it on the record, our plan is to pay for this out of LNIC funds and SPOS, so they would share the cost, so there won't be any impact on the budget.
Okay, I got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Got a second, or any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
The LNIC fund, because I'm not familiar with that, never heard of it, so...
Yes, sir.
Could you tell me exactly what that is?
The motor fuel tax in Georgia is used and distributed to municipalities and counties to help them. It's the local maintenance and improvement grant that comes every year to the city. And we get anywhere from a half a million to a million dollars that we can use for resurfacing, for sidewalks, for storm drain repair. Any of those types of items are eligible for, for use of those funds. And then Beau Prather puts together the list and reports it back to the state and they approve it. So this would be an eligible expense under those funds, and we already have a million dollars of those revenues that will be coming in in this year's budget. And then SPOS has a million dollars that's set aside for stormwater improvements that we can use to pay for part of this as well. So, so it's already funds that are set aside specifically for this type of work.
As of right now, Patrick, do you know what percent will come from the LNIC fund and what percent will come from the SPOS fund?
We were thinking about splitting it 50/50, depending upon where the bid comes in, because that would allow us some additional stormwater projects that need to be done with SPOS and some additional roadwork that needs to be done with LNIC, so that, that was the plan.
Thank you, Patrick.
Yes, sir, a good question.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I do, I do have a question. This is an emergency, so we're not going to bid this.
We are still going to bid it. We'll still get competitive bids, but under the Public Works Law, you have to post the bid for 30 days, then you can open the bids and go through the contracting. This will allow us to shorten that 30-day window. We can put the bids out, get them back in, say, a week, and we get a three-week head start. Because the lake is down right now, we really need to do this, this work while the lake is drawn down, so we need to really expedite the, the process.
We also got, I don't know, I would say 100, 100 houses in there, that this is their only way in and only way out.
Right, right.
It's a failed pipe, so...
That's why it's an emergency. If we had a secondary roadway to get in, it wouldn't be as big of an issue, but because of this, the mayor said, this is a one-way in, one-way out.
I just thought that with C.W. Matthews, like, really close by...
We'll still bid and try to get the best price for the citizens, but we save as much money as we can, because that'll free up the funds for other projects that we need to be doing.
Fantastic.
Any more discussion?
What other, by, I mean, I understand that it's necessary. What projects will it delay with the use of the SPOS funds? Are there any major delays or will it just kind of...
On the SPOS side, we did, the only other stormwater project that we have is on Lee Street. The barge is working on a design for that over in the Habitat Community, because it's, and this has been, it's been flooding over there for a long, long time, and so we're, we're addressing that finally.
Okay, good.
And we hope there'll be sufficient funds to do both if we split this up.
Okay.
We haven't bid that out yet.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure, good question. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same.
Mr. Mayor, I recuse myself from the vote.
Okay, so it passes five to one with one, one recusal.
Yeah.
Upsteech. 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 All right, thank you. Can you say the manager report?
Yes, one other item I have is we do have some surplus items to declare as our purchasing agent is continuing to get rid of unused and old equipment, so we have a list before you. We entertain a motion if you choose to declare a surplus and send it out.
Motion to declare a surplus?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Resolutions, we got authorized the mayor and clerk to execute a third amendment to the school resource officer agreement.
Troup County School Board has asked for an additional SRO, that's School Resource Officer. These are the police officers that spend time in the schools during the school year. And they're adding an 11th, requesting that we add an 11th officer at the Troup County Career Center, they call it TC3. And if it be the council's desire to support them in that, this amendment would move us from 10 SROs to 11 SROs.
Motion to amend the agreement.
It's gonna be to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the third.
Okay. Do we still need a motion to execute?
Yes, yeah, that's good.
Motion to execute.
That's good.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We got one first reading to rezone parcels located at 25 Robertson Street and 118 Raglin Street from CPGB to TNMX and to amend the comprehensive plan character area map designation from arcs to commercial development.
An ordinance of mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code to Minnesota map ordinances of the city's has to reclassify the use of real estate located on Robertson Street and Raglin Street known by Robertson Street Properties to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Okay, no second reading ordinances?
I have a quick question. I'm sorry, I just wanted to go ahead and ask this question. So, since the recommendation on that rezoning came from Planning Commission with a recommendation that included something that we in effect can't do, is it possible that it go back to planning and zoning, or is that not the way that that would work? I mean, my preference would be that in the future, that we not be presented with an option from planning and zoning for something that is in fact an option we can't take.
Okay, understood. So...
I got, I got a question too to add to that.
I mean, I don't know if they, if they were not able, would they have recommended it unanimously if they were not able to condition it with the condition that they sent us? I'm just curious.
My thoughts after hearing from all the public comments is, is if I heard correctly, the developer said that he would, would, would consider doing a 55 and...
the developer said that he would, would consider doing a 55 and older development there. And my question is, how would we hold him to that fire if he did that? Is there any way to fix it, Lawyer Todd, so that if, would it happen, I mean, my question is, can we hold him to that, or can we fix it so that that's the only thing he can do?
Generally speaking, when you rezone properties, you rezone it to all the things in your code that can be done in that particular classification. It's a zoning, it's a zoning ordinance problem if you don't like what things can go to. It's very difficult under the law of what a proper condition is to, and this has come up occasionally before, to narrow it to a specific use.
How does Tucker Cottage get approved, then? Is it just a word of promise that they were gonna do that?
Most of what you rezone is based on speculations.
But there are conditions that are tied to rezonings.
Okay, so, there are conditions in Tucker Cottage, like it was, it was abated on taxes for 15 years, but once that abatement runs out, technically, if somebody bought it, they can do whatever they want with it. So there are certain parameters that exist, but in this one, it's, the zoning ordinance does not allow for us to tell someone exactly what to do. We can give them a range of uses.
I think it, I think it kind of makes us decide if we ever approved anything in the future, if he doesn't do what he said he was gonna do.
Yeah.
You have to go with good faith on him that if he said that's what he's gonna do.
I mean, it seemed like, if, we got one side that would be okay with the 55 and development, he's saying that he would not be opposed to that.
Can you condition it if the buyer, I mean, I've had a property that was conditioned before.
Can we bring it back up here?
That came before council.
He must have heard me talking about it.
I didn't need to know what things were conditioned. But aside from that, if the rezoning were to pass to TNR MX use, is that what we traditional neighborhood mix use?
Yes, ma'am.
But we change the character area map to commercial, does, because it's a multifamily unit, then would it have to come back before us again to change the character area to residential, which is another use within TNR MX? Does that complicate it?
Yes.
I just want to be sure I understand.
Yeah, I think I may be able to clarify two things, Councilwoman Pippin.
Thank you.
First and foremost, and I'm glad to do so, the reason why it has to have an amendment to our comprehensive planned character area map, quite frankly, is because the current designation of parks allows for absolutely zero residential development. So, commercial development was chosen for two reasons. Number one, contiguous parcels on Ragland Street currently share, or currently have that character area designation. Additionally, a multifamily development project is classified as a commercial development project, as opposed to a residential development project, which in reality it is, so at the end of the day, you would not have to take any additional action specifically after you met, if it's your pleasure to amend this to commercial development from parks. Now, I can also speak to your second question. The members of the planning commission really struggled with whether or not to make a recommendation to this council, to whether or not to rezone the property. And one of the things that they struggled with, quite frankly, is the same thing that I believe you struggled with, each of you, within the context of multifamily. They understand, just as you understand, that we've added approximately either 1,652 or for conversation purposes, 1,700 market-rate multifamily units. And they're sensitive to that, just like you are, and it was their hope that they would be able to apply that condition. And we've got some very intelligent people that serve on that board. We had a conversation as to whether or not that would even be legally possible. So after they recommended that particular condition, that's when we, or I specifically consulted our city attorney and engaged him in dialogue, and he's already explained why that becomes challenging.
Well, the revert is a problem, I'm still going to look at the ability to condition it to an affordable housing project, I haven't looked at that part.
But if you could, if you can do it to that, then we could do it to the condition of 55 and older, correct?
It's the same thing, basically.
I'd like to have a little time to spin around the votes.
Okay, well, see, I think we've, I think this has been fruitful.
Yeah, I think. Since that's closed, we probably can't bring him back up.
Hey, Mark, before you leave, so at the time we was in planning zoning, the condition that they made, they did not, you did not know that, we could not do that.
That is correct. I mean, it was their desire not to add additional market-rate multifamily to the city's inventory.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, their logic was, you know, if it indeed is possible, they wanted to go on record with that being their, their non-binding recommendation.
Got you. So I heard that lady say, she sounded like she was an attorney or something, she was like, how about an amendment to the approval for development? Is that something?
She's a realtor.
She do, no, not that realtor lady.
This was the pickleball lady.
Oh, yeah, yeah. She said it could be an amendment to an approval for a development.
I'm not familiar with a lot of the terminology that she was using, quite frankly, so I'm not so sure that I'm qualified to answer that question.
Got you.
How are you gonna approve something and then change it, because therefore you didn't approve it?
Is that something we can look up?
I can assure you that I understand the goal.
Yeah. We definitely have a lot more discussions on this.
Before you have a vote.
We have, before we have a vote, we'll engage in conversation with the developer, but I don't think it'd be fair to bring him back up here after the public hearing's been closed.
That's right.
So, all abstaining from bringing him back up, we can have a discussion, you know, city hall.
I just thought of these questions as they came up.
And you weren't here this morning.
And I wasn't here this morning.
If you were to be here this morning, you could have did all that.
I would have asked all the questions.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, closing comments. Oh, there he is, I was looking for Katie over here.
He's definitely not Katie.
Yes, sir. Reminder that the La Grange Fire Department's annual 9/11 stair climb is this Thursday, beginning at 8:00 a.m. at Callaway Stadium. Attendees will climb the equivalent of 110 stories up and down to remember and honor the sacrifices that were made 24 years ago. Public is encouraged to join with a registration fee of $25. Proceeds will benefit the Terry Federal Foundation, supporting programs for fallen firefighters and their families. This event also serves as the kickoff for the Mayor's Health Initiative. Mayor Harrington will be attending and even putting on a full set of bunker gear to tackle some of the stair climbs. We hope everyone can attend.
I don't want you sweating.
Meet the dirt.